Let's talk about, why don't we do liaisons?
Sure.
If people don't mind, and that's on page nine and 10. And, you know, you're gonna hate me, Becky, but I failed to bring my list which had the items you had requested. Do you have a copy of that?
I managed to find it myself, thank goodness.
Good, because I can look it up if you have it, I just wanted to apologize for that. So, and we also have a request from John Geiger which are, he would like to be on...
Listen, the way that got here, because there seemed to be a little confusion about that at times, was Mark asked me in a meeting what I was interested in, so I just responded to him.
You did, and I let the board know what you gave me.
It's all good, I don't have a problem with that.
I wasn't trying to go around anybody.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, it's fine. I thought it was, well, at least it was...
So you want to just go down the list?
Yeah, I just want to write down, I apologize, I want to write down, I meant to print a couple of things, I just want to write down. Actually, you know what I can do, I can't do snip on this. Sure, and then Becky, what did you, what did you have on your list?
I had said police or all public safety.
Yep.
Conservation.
Yep.
Community preservation.
Yep.
Library.
Yep.
I said I was willing to do one of water sewer electric. And since then, I was, I attended the meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust last week. The person, one of the members whom we're actually about to reappoint may be moving out of town.
I have an update on that when you get to your appointments.
Okay, well, so, what was sort of discussed in that meeting was that if that member did have to drop off the Affordable Housing Trust, that Stuart could, who's the selectman appointee could take over that role, and I could become the second.
Point of order, please.
Yeah.
This is not a liaison position.
Oh, okay.
That's appointment.
It's, I think, listed here on the liaison list here on the back.
It's a different, that's not the Affordable Housing Trust that you see on there.
Oh, how am I supposed to know that?
No, it's okay.
Just letting you know.
What is it that's listed here?
We'll go over them.
We'll go through it.
All right.
It's different. Do you want to just go through the list?
So, yeah, let's go through the list. So, for police, I'd like to retain primary. I would be, so, since both John and Becky have requested, does anybody have a challenge between Josh and Allison with either of them splitting that, you know, family one or family other, so you have particular need or want to be on either as an alternate?
Either of what, police and fire?
Yeah.
So, could you explain?
I think it's useful for one of you to be on fire and one of you to be on police as a bridge to go through it this year, so there is an alternate in case there's an election coming next year, I may not be around.
I'm just not clear what you're suggesting, primary or alternate for fire and police.
So, my intent, I don't like the words alternate, I like the word partnered.
Okay.
Okay, so if we're there, it's like, hey, let's go, you know, let's do this. Sometimes I think people think the alternate does nothing, but the reality is the alternate can be another outreach from the, from the department heads, and we certainly should go together to those departments and introduce ourselves and say either of us are available to be contacted if you have any issues or discussions, or you need support from the board on a particular night. For example, I know from a fire department point of view, they often would like a board, a board member available for their training nights or their recruitment nights, happens to be that I'm going to be on vacation, and we don't have anybody else who can go right now yet, right? And something, and that needs to be something that's discussed ahead of time and understood. So that's why I think it's useful to have two different people who are co, you know, co-primes on this, if you will. But I would like to ask, you know, I think there's, there's usefulness to have both you and, and John to be one of each, but I just want to get your preferences for which one you'd like to be.
I'm fine with either, so Becky make your choice.
I guess I would go with police.
Okay, so that, so we'll do, Becky is police and John is fire EMS?
That's fine.
As a, not as an alternate.
But as...
Not calling it alternate anymore?
Well, keep it as alternate, keep it as alternate.
Keep it as alternate, okay.
The way we act is different, but primary is myself.
All right, so Becky on police, John on fire.
Right.
Barry, you taking board of health?
Yeah, I don't think there's any reason to have a second for that, to be honest with you.
Allison, Sam?
So Barry, how long have you been the...
One year.
Last year was your first.
Yep.
So is Barry the alternate for police and fire? I'm trying to understand.
No, I'll be primary.
Remind me of that decision.
I'll be primary still.
Oh, we're alternates.
You guys will be alternates, so, and then, we'll want to slip that next year if I'm not there anymore, or I'm happy to flip that around, right? I think it's good to have, yeah.
Well, there may be extra work this year, I guess I'm not saying that.
Right, okay. Planning board.
I like the partnership idea.
Yeah.
Let me just say that.
Planning board. Allison, I don't know that I do any good as the alternate.
I don't know that I do any good as the primary, I mean, I introduced myself, I, I'm fine retaining what I have or changing to other things.
We can keep it as is, that's no problem. ZBA, you guys okay keeping it as is? Conservation commission, Becky, you're already primary and Josh is already backup, and that was something you would like. Conservation was something John had wanted, do you want him to be alternate instead of you?
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll put, we'll switch Josh out for Mr. Geiger on that conservation commission. Building commissioner, someone who's volunteered to take your spot?
I'd like to retain him.
You want to retain him?
If that's okay with you.
Okay, yep. CPC, Becky, you already are on CPC. Would you like to retain that?
Yes.
Okay.
But, I mean...
All right, going down to schools.
Sure, Allison would love to go back to the school. Boy, John.
I would be happy to do that at this point, there's enough, a little separation there at this point.
So Allison is primary?
I was hoping you would say that.
So, and all, without objection, I'd like to be backup. I have a good rapport with, oh my God.
Who wants to take Neshoba Tech?
Who wants to take primary in Neshoba Tech?
I'll do it with nobody else.
Josh? Seems like every time I try to get one of the things they have, I can't make it.
I would, I'd put myself in as alternate on that one.
Well, if you want to be primary, right?
I don't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll give up alternate as Neshoba Valley Tech, that's not...
So you're Barry, so Allison's primary to Groton Dunspill, Barry's backup, Josh is primary to Neshoba Tech, Becky's backup.
That sounds fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Highway?
I'd like to retain.
Josh retains highway.
I would like to.
Yeah. Becky, since you had asked for water sewer or electric...
Let me rephrase, I said I would be willing to do one of water sewer and electric.
You said one of, either or?
Willing to do.
All of them.
Not interested in, but willing.
I said I am willing to do one of these three, I'm not saying I want to do one of these three, I just want to correct you.
Well, okay, so, you're already on the Groton electric as an alternate, it makes sense to become primary.
Okay.
Who would like water as a result? And we have, by the way, West Water and Groton Water, which, can we please have the same person to vote?
No, why would we have the same person, they're, they're two totally separate boards.
I understand.
Yeah, but it's all the same issues.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Barry, are you keeping sewer?
Water, unless you want water.
I'm happy to retain sewer.
John, do you want?
No, 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 I think you could possibly combine the two waters.
You know what, John wants sewer, let's give sewer to John.
I would love to combine the two waters, but I don't think either department would want to do that.
I was, that's what I was just talking about, I thought you just said you were going to do the two waters.
I did, yeah.
Oh, I said, okay, sorry.
So Josh is doing, the way I have it, Josh is doing highway, Josh is doing water, John is doing sewer, Becky is doing electric light, Josh is doing West Groton water.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Council on aging?
COA. It's yours, Josh, you want to keep it?
Okay, country club?
Country club, right now it's Allison and we need a, do we need an alternate?
No, you don't need an alternate.
Okay, so right now, Allison, you're happy to retain that?
Yes.
Do you know you were that?
It has not been a heavy lift, yes.
Okay, I get it. Becky, right now you are parks, and I'm library.
I'm happy to switch those.
I'm happy to switch others, you really want to be, you know, I have a good rapport with library and I'm happy to, happy to continue that before as an alternate or as an aside, it's up to you.
Okay, no, I'd like to do library, you can do parks if, if you're looking.
That's fine.
Or was parks one of the ones you want?
So Becky's doing park, Barry's doing, Becky's doing library, Barry's doing park?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, tax collector, we need somebody?
So this is that front right there, we need someone to fill that role.
Is there something particular?
If there's no, if nobody's volunteering, I'm happy to take it, I actually end up being in that room almost every Monday, and we're just seeing everybody anyway and having conversations, so it's sort of natural, I don't have a problem, because they're just right here. So I'm happy to continue that, and I'm also happy to continue to be on the assessors. Allison, right now you're town accountant, do you have any, you're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, finance committee, I'm happy to retain, it would be nice to have an alternate, sometimes they have a lot of meetings, and it would be nice to have someone else who might be able to get involved in a financial way, I'm looking over there.
I'll do it as alternate.
I'm willing to, but I feel like there's a little bit of a...
A little heavy lift, yeah.
Well, a potentially a conflict between my husband and I.
That's true, yes, never mind, that's not happening.
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me.
I'll do it.
We don't need another topic to...
So Becky's backup?
Unless you don't want me.
No, I don't want you, it's...
It's not a matter of wanting or not wanting, so, there's a lot of stuff with that one sometimes.
All right, H R I T, happy to maintain, Josh, M J R P, M J T C.
Yeah, it's been a ton of heavy lifting on some of them either.
Right, exactly. What is the MPO and who can do, and who can do that?
It's basically the Metropolitan Planet Commission?
Montechusa?
Montechusa.
It's not military force.
Yeah, it's kind of associated with the Joint Transportation Committee and the Regional Planet Committee. I'm happy to do it.
All right, yeah.
Sounds good.
M R P C is the...
Montechusa Regional Planet Commission.
Right, and the M J T C, I believe is the...
Joint Transportation Commission.
But what is MPO, do we know?
The...
For those of you who join us at seven o'clock, we're doing our...
Do you want to know something? I'm not sure, Jack used to be the liaison.
MPO.
Mark, what's the...
The MPO.
Why didn't you say, planning something?
Organization.
We got that.
Organization, let's just say it's organization.
They're actually a great source of information if you have questions like, what's the traffic in Groton compared to Littleton?
Well, that's got to be the...
Very useful data source.
No, those are the M R P.
Yeah, well, anyway.
Let's put Josh on that, please.
Sounds like Josh could...
Yep, Josh is the affordable housing.
Let's put Josh and Becky.
Well, will you explain to Becky what that is, I believe that's the Affordable Housing Task Force?
Correct.
As opposed to the Affordable Housing Trust, Becky, which you were referring to earlier, which is a selectman's appointment.
Okay.
Let's select one, excuse me. Clarify that on the list, please.
I just wrote task force, and then MBTA advisory board?
There's, there's no reason to be, I'm happy to be honest, still, I've never been invited or been to...
Guess who's still getting all the mail-ins on them off the basis? We changed that last year.
He did, and I maybe got one email and it was...
It's still coming to me. All right, we'll do it again, can we follow up with them?
Maybe we should just put Josh back there.
Yeah, right.
So, save a lot of paper.
Okay.
So Barry, those are the liaison assignments?
Sure. Perfect, thank you. Hello, everybody, thank you for joining us, we got done with our previous line item, about 10 minutes early, so decided to take some time to go over liaison assignments. Welcome to the select board meeting for Monday, June 8th, 2018. At 6:00 PM, we had a work session, at about 6:50, we did liaison assignments, now returning to our regular schedule. Before we get into anything else, well, let me read the, review the agenda, then I've got a couple of things to say before we go further. Plan to do announcements and review this agenda, do a public comment period where votes may be taken, and then we'll proceed to our business town manager report, select board's agenda schedule, review and approve bond anticipation note for various capital projects where a vote may be taken, review matrix operational audit recommendation of the IT department with Mr. Chasins here for that, a vote may be taken, review and establish select, what we've already done, item number four, which is select board liaison assignments, review and adopt town manager review of policy, vote may be taken, this allows us to drop something off our other items list, determine and discuss goal compilation document, there's a document that Allison Manugian put together, remember Manugian put together, which we'll be reviewing, vote may be taken, determine the date of the 2018 fall town meeting, a vote may be taken, review and approve the draft zoning bylaw related to recreational marijuana, a vote may be taken, consider making the annual appointments of the select board and ratifying the appointments of the town manager, votes may be taken. At 7:15, we will take, we will break whatever we're doing as close as possible and deliberate and consider appointing a police chief for the town of Groton, a vote may be taken. At 7:45, we will see where we are with our police chief situation and try to take, try to cut over to review and interview applicants for the fire department task force study committee upon which a vote may be taken. We have, we do not have other business tonight, we do have some ongoing issues through the, through the list that you're all accustomed to seeing by now, I hope, and then, following the conclusion of our normal business, following the normally scheduled items prior to our executive session, we will go into executive session, we have two items to conduct here and then, it is possible we will, we will exit executive session and come back into normal session afterwards. We won't know that, though, until, we'll definitely have to come into a normal session afterwards, though we may not, we may not do anything during that session.
I don't have a normal session.
Depends on how we, don't we have to structure the going executive session and say it, so we may have to come out and...
You may have to come out of our session.
Because we have to declare.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we have to come out, we may or may not do anything afterwards, just for clarification purposes. As a result of that, there may be a period of time where the video and the microphones go silent while we conduct that business, and then we'll be notified, our wonderful cable help person to whether or not we're going to come back with more useful information or public or not. Before we get into anything else, there are power edges happening in Groton, we know that, this building is equipped with a, with a standby generator, we will not stop, if there's power elsewhere, we will continue, in the event that we, you know, you lose power at your house and can't watch anymore, please understand it's on tape, or please come down to town hall if it's safe and view here in person, but we will not be pausing if there's any outpowers elsewhere, we will continue as long as we have power in this room. The second item is a reminder that there will be no public discussion tonight on the police chief issue. So that was, that was, people have notified in advance, everybody's got the message, we've got tons of, tons of pre-communications, so appreciate that, just want to be clear, there will be no public discussion during the police chief appointments. Any other announcements from board members? Becky?
Just going back to the situation last week where we made appointments, I did meet with the town manager and discuss that next year, when the preliminary list of appointments comes out, will also be made clear that if there's a need to, for one of us to see an employee's performance review, that is fine, it just needs to be scheduled.
There's one more item, but I'm stealing Mark's thunder a little bit, we had a little incident while we were trying to do some organization and figure out some things where, because we often will send emails to everybody, somebody replied all accidentally, and that, that could be interpreted as a violation of open menu law. To avoid that from happening, we've established new policies, actually it was Mark's idea, and it's established new policy where, when Mark sends emails to the, to the board, they will always be blind CC to all of us, so there's no way we can reply all and copy anybody else, as well as the policy for the board will be, when the board is sending out information, they will also blind CC, and it'll just be, even like agenda scheduling things, which is what comes out, will be blind CC, so there's no opportunity for debate or even mistakes to happen. In this case, there was a mistake, it was immaterial, but we want to just prevent that from happening.
I don't know that the BCC will protect us if one of us sends out?
Because it can only go to Mark. Right, don't, don't send anything else.
The board should not send out anything to other board members ever.
Right, but the chair may send stuff to the board members from a, from a scheduling point of view.
Correct.
Right?
And scheduling is not...
Scheduling is not, yes, scheduling is not...
Not a violation.
Not a violation, when I do that, if I do that, and if, you know, I will make sure that's BCC also. It was actually Meyer in the first place sending stuff out in non-BCC format, and then then reply all. Okay, with no further ado, let's do number two, please. Oh, we have a...
Public comment.
Yeah, any other, any other public comment? Yeah, please. Is this from our water board or our sewer board?
Or our citizen.
Both.
And citizen too?
No, I just want to remind folks that there is a water conservation ban program in place, odd even, and no Mondays, we've sent out over 200 letters again, I just need people to adhere to that program, and I think we'll be all set, we are in a moderate drought, so people need to be aware of that. Secondly, your Four Corners Sewer Project is complete, the street is striped and paved, and there is sewer flowing to four corners to air, and we are, Michelle is finalizing the final payment, so that is off our list.
And Shaw's has reached out to us and they're ready to talk about connection, that's very exciting too, so, I want to thank Tom Orkut for his outstanding job on this, as well as Michelle Collette, for staying on top of this project and making it a success. Thank you, Tom.
It was truly a team effort with Mark, Michelle, Tom Delaney, and myself, so...
Great, that's good news.
Just want to let you know that.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
Thank you.
Your cell phone has a...
Yep, Judy, okay, thanks Judy.
Who did you end up, who ended up being the liaison for the senior center?
Josh.
Council on aging, yes, it's Josh Deegan.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, any other public comments, Judy? No? All right, seeing none, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, item number two in the town manager's report, tonight, town treasurer, as you can see, is here tonight, we did have some bans that we opened up last Thursday on some of the capital projects that we have, Mike is here to, to talk about, basically we borrowed money to renew, we renewed the Whitney well bond for the water commission, we bonded the $325,000 for the new highway equipment the town meeting approved, and we borrowed the first half of the senior center, a little bit more than half of the senior center money for the project, and so Mike is here tonight to tell you about what the interest is and what the costs are, and have, hopefully, the select board approve those bonds.
Mike, take it away.
Hi, everyone, well, to follow up on what Mark said, we went out to bid last Thursday and on this $3.689 million, the brunt of which is the first part of the senior center construction project. Mark has had discussions with the, the planning individuals with the senior center, so we decided to go with $3 million, we feel that'll take us into the early part of calendar 2019. When we started borrowing short term as a planning tool a couple of years ago, interest rates were around 1%. They since went to 1.25%. February of 17, just for your information, August of 15, we borrowed at 0.45%, April of 16, 0.75%, February of 17, 1.15%, June of 17, 1.25%. This past February, we, we reborrowed on the Lost Lake Fire Protection and the radios and got 1.55%. Our planning projections for this short-term debt policy that we were, we were looking at, we were trying to stay in the 1.5 range, and we thought that that would be a place where we could park ourselves. Interest rates stayed under 1% for six consecutive years, we just went out to borrow and bid last week and it came in at 2.25%.
Whoa, big change.
Right after the feds raised...
Yes, of course.
With the threat of raising it two more times.
So there is a threat of raising it two more times, so having said all that, we met with our bond advisors from Unibank last week, we feel that, you know, we'll borrow now for the Whitney well, roll that over, the water department's been making mandatory paydowns out of their budget, which is what they want to do over a five-year period, or, or up to a 10-year period, it's up to them. We, again, we talked about the $3 million to get the senior center project well underway through the early part of next year, and we have the two pieces of highway equipment. So we're going to go with a short-term, short-term borrowing at the 2.25%, and we're going to stay on top of the situation between now and November and see how the market reacts. If the market looks like it's going to rise, we're going to go to the bond market in November and package everything together for a long-term bond.
Long-term rates are actually more favorable according to our bond advisors than short-term rates, it used to be the opposite.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why we had the plan, but the feds have really messed that up.
Long-term rates don't react as quickly.
Correct.
So, we have two options coming up, we can, you know, we, we don't expect anything to go below 2.25%, we're going to see where they, where they sit in November, we'll probably go to the bond market in November, if things are still, seem okay, we're going to do it in February. Those are the, November and February are the two prime, prime borrowing times that we've been recommended we should shoot for.
So in other words, my question would be, why not go now, you say, because it's better to go in November or February?
Well, it is, it's better to go in November and February, and we also have other considerations.
I don't want to permanently bond the senior center project until we know what the fundraising is, because we want to be able to lower the amount we've permanently financed, so I want to wait, not only is November and, and February better times, because there's more time to understand where the fundraising is coming through on the senior center project, to limit the amount.
And there's some preparation involved, we want to get our financial statements audited and all done, and that'll be, that'll be in place by November.
We have to do a bond review to see, a bond rating review to make sure we maintain our trajectory.
Wall Street will be looking at our, all of our financials.
They're in good shape.
Josh had a question first.
So based on your planning and your assumed interest rate, before it went up, one could construe we're paying north of $20,000 more in interest than what your plans were for the short-term borrower?
Yeah, approximately.
So hypothetically speaking, and you're talking about fundraising, and wanting to see what the numbers are, and if the long-term interest rates are preferable over the short-term interest rates, why wouldn't you just bond the senior center right now, leave in the Whitney well and the highway equipment out, and then see how favorable things are at a later point?
Because I don't know if we're going to need all the 5.4 the town meeting authorized for the senior center, if they raise a half a million dollars in fundraising, we'll only permanently bond 4.7, so I want to see where we stand with that.
That's why I said leave the highway and the, and the Whitney well out.
Just bond the 3 million, you're saying, Josh?
No, no, because the senior center, the senior center is the, is the biggest portion there. The highway stuff, we'll probably keep that on short-term bonds regardless of the interest rate, because we're going to pay that really quickly, through state house notes over five years. The, the senior center, I don't want to permanently finance that till I know where the fundraising is, so I know exactly how much we need to permanently finance.
Is there a penalty to us if we were to bond the whole thing and then discover we don't need it? Can we make a...
Once you bond it, then we, it's, you can't change it, once you bond it, you can't change Once you bond it, you can't change it down the road, no.
So we can't make a lump sum payment early on or something? Okay.
But permanently bonding the 3 million instead of the 1?
No, we're doing it short-term. I would keep it short-term until we permanently finance everything.
Well, then we'd have to do another bond issue anyway.
Yeah.
Because we're going to be rolling in the Lost Lake Fire Protection, the radios, and all that other stuff.
Correct.
So we're looking at, you know, about an $8 million bond issue, or $89 million.
John, please. Good. Josh has a follow-up.
Do we have a policy that defines what kind of a commitment it takes for us to count or receive of a contribution?
For the senior center?
For the senior center.
There was a separate committee that's doing the fundraising on that? So I don't have an answer piece on it. I don't want to give out bad answers.
Okay, that's a concern of mine.
Let me find out.
In that, if anything, you know, somebody casually says, "Yeah, I'll give you $200,000", do you go to the bank on that? Because we're talking about going to the bank.
Yeah, so it would have to be, yes. So I agree with you 100%.
Josh, you had a follow-up.
So you had indicated that you believe that the Fed will raise the interest rates two more times.
We've been told to expect it, that that's what they're hearing.
That's what I'm hearing.
And they announce it at least definitely one more time.
So why don't you consider long-term bond right now, including the fire protection, the radios, and everything, at the current moment? Why risk waiting and having an interest rate increase?
We rolled the bands over in February, so those are good until next February. We already signed off on those. It's been to do one major bond issued and consecutive bond issues, so I want to wait for the senior center. And as Mike said earlier, long-term interest rates don't react to the Fed as much as short-term interest rates do. So you'll see a slower timeframe for that to be an upgrade. And they're still pretty effective right now, from what we've been told.
I don't agree with that rationale, but you guys have the paperwork.
Well, that's what our bond advisor has advised us.
I just think we're risking paying more money in interest.
Well, don't forget, we did a mandatory pay down, so we're not going to bond as much on those issues as originally.
The February money is at 1.5%, so that's not a bad rate. We're going to be hitting 2.25% for a shorter period of time.
Yeah.
And what are long-term rates right now if you were to bond right now?
What did he say, it was 3.5?
3.5 to 3.75%.
For February money in the short term.
Okay.
For AAA.
Very good questions on Josh. I'm glad you're asking.
Yeah.
Any further questions, Board? I'd like to-
Long-term rates are still substantially higher than short-term.
Sorry, am I going to mean-
No, no.
Any other questions from the Board on this?
So these are three town meeting-approved borrowing authorizations. And I have the standard paperwork with five pieces of paper that I need. Three out of five signatures, please.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yes. I move that the select board authorize the bonding, short-term bonding of $3,689,175.
In principle.
Is that correct, Mike?
That's the principle, plus-
In principle, plus the applicable interest.
Plus the applicable interest, please, yeah.
Hey, while you guys, oh, sorry.
Second.
Moved to seconded. Any further discussion, Town Manager?
I just want to say, to answer Josh's question, there are legal documents which will be entered into with contributors to guarantee the amounts pledged.
Okay. Can we just friendly amend it to include the three projects that this is for? Is that...
Sure.
Please, yeah.
The Whitney Well, highway equipment, and the senior center.
So friendly amendment accepted. Anything else from the Board? Public comment? Ms. Connie Christine.
Yes, Connie Christine. I'd like to advise you that I'm a member of the fundraising committee for the new center.
Thank you.
And we are working with a 501(c)(3) under the auspices of the Friends of Elders so that we record every donation that is coming in. Furthermore, everything is signed through a written agreement by a voluntary contribution from a very well-known attorney, so that we will be very certain that everything is in order. So I just want to let you know that.
Any, go ahead, John.
Don't get me wrong, I'm just concerned if the contribution has already been made, that's money in the bank.
Yes.
I'm concerned if we start trying to come up with the right numbers to bond, and we have some people who are thinking they're going to do it.
We'll have a number for you prior to bonding.
Beg your pardon?
We will have a number to you prior to bonding.
Great. Thank you.
Anything further from the Board? Take a vote. All those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
I heard it unanimous. Okay, at this point, Josh has the paperwork.
It's five pages. I'd appreciate signatures if you can squeeze them in as you do your business.
Mark, you had a challenge or a question?
Yeah, I want you to get onto the police chief, and I don't want to keep Mike chasing here all night long, because you have something else after that. So I'd like to defer Mike to a future meeting so he does not have to hang around, and I know you want to get right into the police chief discussion.
Yeah, I do. Mike-
Is that already you, Mike?
You'll have fun with that.
Yeah, I just don't want to, I don't want to keep you here all night.
Do we think it'll take more than two minutes to go through the three items?
Probably not, but it's up to the Board. I don't know.
What's your experience with this Board?
I would think that even we could maybe get through this in a very short window.
I think deferring is-
I'd rather defer it, Mike. If you're, I appreciate the flexibility on your behalf, and thanks for coming to this point. So I appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Michael. Michael.
Okay, let's go into item number two on the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, if I could just give you a brief update for the public's knowledge before the Board begins its deliberations. The Board of Selectmen did conduct your public interviews of the three candidates last Wednesday night. The three candidates are Police Chief Jason Lavoy from the town of Hudson, New Hampshire Police Department, Lieutenant Michael Luth from the Ludenberg Police Department, and Deputy Police Chief James Cullen from the Groton Police Department. The Board conducted their interviews, and then on Thursday, the 14th, the Board conducted an assessment center in which they went through an INTRA exercise, they went through a situation response exercise, they went through a program planning exercise, a citizen complaint exercise, an oral interview exercise, and an employee meeting exercise. Very detailed assessment centers. Four of the five members of the Board of Selectmen were present for a variety of the assessments. The fifth member of the Board received the video of the assessments and was able to watch those over the weekend. So I would say all Board members have been fully versed in what happened during the assessment center. They're rated on a scale of up to 100, and they are very, very strict in the way that they were doing this. You had retired police chiefs, current police chiefs, and retired police captain doing the assessment. There were six assessors altogether that went through the exercises. It was a full-day event, and the way they came out is Police Chief Lavoy scored an 86.5% on the assessment. Lieutenant Luth scored an 88.1% on the assessment, and Deputy Chief Cullen scored a 76.6% on the assessment. So I wanted to make sure the public was aware of that, and I'm sure the Board will discuss that in more detail, but I wanted to put that out there for the Board.
Yeah, as a clarification, follow on. Videos are actually made available to all of us, because there were simultaneous assessments going on in different rooms, and so I found it necessary to review the things I wasn't able to witness through the videos, so I did take that.
That's a good clarification. Thank you.
Before we move on to anything else of substance, would anybody like to comment on the process? Anything you'd like to illuminate, anything you'd like to talk about there? Go ahead, Becky.
I would actually like to talk a little bit about that assessment process, because as a, prior to being on this Board, if I'd heard what you just said or what has been said publicly about it, I don't think I would have understood what it really was. So just to go into a little bit of detail, there was essentially role-playing by all of the candidates, and the situation was very well set up and structured so that each candidate was asked to do, was presented with the same situation. And the, it was an incredibly useful way of gathering data. We got to see the candidates in action, in essence, but we also got to then see the way the panel, which was retired police chiefs, one sitting police chief, and a retired captain, the way that they assessed what they had seen. And there were guidelines that we could see what they were supposed to look for, and then, so, and the panel of assessors did not know anything about the candidates, not their names or their previous experience. They were essentially anonymous, they were numbered. And it went all day, and we saw a lot of different varieties of how those candidates would be expected to, how they would do. It was, I think, very stressful for all three candidates, as it would be, I think, for pretty much anyone in almost any profession, unless your profession is professional acting, where you're used to having people watch you perform, but none of us is used to this. I think it was stressful. I assume that all of our candidates actually went home and thought, "Oh, darn, why didn't I say or do such and such a thing?" For me, it was particularly interesting to hear the police chiefs, who did not know these people, analyze and assess and see what they saw. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Anybody else clear comment?
I'm sorry, it's too fast.
Okay, so the purpose we're here tonight is to, there's two options for us. We can either select a candidate from amongst the three brought forward by the Town Manager, or we can tell the Town Manager we choose to select none of them. So I offer those two options up to the Board, and to begin discussion on these, who'd like to go first? Allison, I look like you're raring to go.
Yeah. No, I just want to say that I was incredibly impressed with all three candidates. I've been through a number of these kind of interview recruitment processes on the school committee, and I don't think I've ever completed the process feeling as confused and unsure of my decision as I was at that point. So, you know, I want to praise all three of them and appreciate their coming forward. You know, they really had different strengths that were shown to us, both in the interview and then in the assessment centers, but all three of them, I think, are probably standouts in their profession. I do have a preference myself, and I'm comfortable moving forward with a selection rather than kicking things back to the Town Manager.
Since you opened that door, is there anybody who's not comfortable? Let me rephrase that. Do I have three members who are not comfortable making any selection of the three? Seeing none, I'll assume we move forward within a selection process.
That makes the Town Manager happy that he did the job. Thanks.
Okay. So Allison, would you like to continue, or do you want to defer?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, for me, the things that I was looking at were the real pieces that were different for each of the three candidates. Obviously, Deputy Chief Cullen has a tremendous length and breadth of experience here within Groton, which generally is a tremendous asset. Chief Lavoy has approximately a decade of being a chief under his belt, which brings tremendous experience, you know, to the process. He's already been in a number of these situations and things. He knows the job. That said, I was most impressed with Mr. Luth. I was particularly impressed with his attitude around leadership and modeling behavior. You know, he said a couple times that he doesn't anticipate that he's ever the smartest person in the room. He acknowledged, you know, "I make mistakes all the time," which to me were, may sound concerning on the surface, but were really strong elements of leadership rather than, you know, kind of management or something else. I think that he brings to the table a strength of communication, a knowledge of the community, you know, living here and having grown up here, and he was very strong in the assessment center, which was, for me, very influential.
Becky, I'm not trying to go around the table necessarily, but I'm happy to.
Okay. So Jim Cullen, I felt has a very deep level of integrity, is deeply, deeply committed to our Groton Police Department, and extremely highly respected by many, many residents, and also by his fellow police officers. However, based on the public interviews and the assessment process, I don't think he is the right choice to lead the department at this time. I know this will be a very large disappointment for Jim and for many, many residents and his many current police officers. We are very lucky to have him as a member of our police department, and I think his support will be invaluable in the transition to a new chief. I sincerely hope he stays with us because we need him. I felt that there were two very strong candidates. Jason Lavoy has the experience, 10 years as a police chief, with a philosophy that I felt would be a good fit in Groton. But I felt that he had several significant drawbacks, in my opinion. I felt like the large learning process of shifting from New Hampshire to Massachusetts and learning how we do things was going to be, take a long time. Also, moving from a police department in a city that are quite a bit larger than Groton, I thought would also be a big adjustment for him. And the third thing was that he lives quite a distance away from Groton and said that he would not be moving. I thought that was a drawback. With Michael Luth, I felt that he projected energy, integrity, and confidence throughout the interview and the assessment process. The total assessment scores were close, as Mark mentioned, but Michael was higher, and he was higher on four of the six categories, and he was higher overall. And I felt that this was all the more significant, because he was being compared to someone who has been chief for 10 years, and he has not been a chief. So he scored higher than someone with 10 years of experience. He lives in Groton. Many of us already know him and have seen him in action. I've heard from many people who have seen him in action in a variety of contexts, as a neighbor, as a local business owner, and as a karate teacher with children, teens, and adults, and he was particularly highly commended for his ability to interact with teens and children, which I think is very important. I think that people who know him have seen the same traits of energy, integrity, and confidence that I saw in the interviews and in the assessments. So I am unequivocally enthusiastic about supporting him and very excited with the idea of having him become our police chief. And I've also seen him as a person in town, very friendly, very caring, very genuine. I think we will do well with him.
Who'd like to come in? John, Josh?
Good choice, you're the chair.
John, please.
Liberating this over the weekend and receiving input from various folks in the community that had thoughts about this, for me, this has turned into a very difficult decision. While he did very well in the activities last Thursday, Chief Lavoy didn't rub well on me. Many of my concerns are identical to the ones that Ms. Pine pointed out. I could never get an understanding of why someone from a much larger department would suddenly want to come to the town of Groton. I was also concerned that someone who comes, because in many of the things, the way he answered questions, it seemed he had an assistant for this and an assistant for that and an assistant for something else. We don't have assistants here, and we can't afford to have assistants here. That was a concern for me, because it becomes part of a management style where you can delegate a lot of things, and here it's more hands-on, I think, just because of the size of our department and so forth. I've known Deputy Chief Cullen for a good number of years. I have extremely high respect for him. I think he did well. I factored in, you know, a little piece of, sort of like extra credit, if you will, because I think it's very hard for someone who's here and going through these various role-playing situations, and yet be thinking about his community. Difficult to separate sort of reality from abstraction. And I think that would, I know it would be hard for me to do, and so I kind of discounted a bit exactly where his scores came in. I thought a lot about a couple of comments that the evaluators made, and that was that they generally see the three candidates come out with a score somewhere in the 700s. So for us to get people in here, you know, with 800s is an indication that we have some really, had some really good candidates. I think in the, and Mike Luth, Lieutenant Luth, did well on those activities last Thursday. I think he has a persona around him that's very outgoing, very energetic, very enthusiastic. And so looking at all of Groton needs and considering all the people involved, my vote is going to be for Michael Luth.
Josh?
I'll start off with Jason Lavoy. Jason, very knowledgeable chief. My concerns, however, are along the lines of my fellow colleagues. I just can't fathom for the life of me why somebody from a large department from another state would want to leave the chief's role and come to a small town like Groton, but not even move here and want to commute 40 minutes each way in the event of an emergency. At the moment, not understanding Massachusetts state laws to the extent that he understands New Hampshire state laws, I just would need to eliminate him automatically from contention, and that's what I did. Turning to Jimmy Cullen, he is an asset to our department, and it has been very difficult in to make this decision. I like going with a known quantity, because what he had to offer and what he still has to offer this town would serve us well. The transition would be- The transition would be very smooth. The people's knowledge and the constituency here in this town know Jimmy, and the officers know Jimmy. It would really work out quite well. However, I go with empirical values based on the Assessment Center, which has been highly successful in the past for hiring previous chiefs, for hiring a town manager. And the results of the Assessment Center, hands down, coupled with the interviews that we conducted, really weighed in Mike Luth's favor. And while I value Jimmy and hope Jimmy stays on board for the morale of the department, for the long term, for Jim, and if Jim wants to succeed and ultimately become a chief, whether it be here or someone else, we certainly hope he stays. But Mike exuded all qualities I wanted to see in the next chief for the town of Groton, and therefore, I am choosing Mike Luth as well.
Okay. So I guess, you know, it's fair and reasonable to go through the same process. I too discounted, and by the way, I think it's important for everybody to understand that when somebody applies a position of this nature, there's going to be discussion. And the discussion is meant out of respect and out of careful consideration, and I hope that any feedback on any one of these individuals may help them in their future endeavors. So please don't dismiss us for the job we have to do in analyzing candidates and be accountable to the public for saying why and how. I too removed one of the candidates from consideration shortly after, shortly during Thursday's session, I would say. And that was the chief from New Hampshire. I felt that, and I think I did it more because I felt that we had two Grotonites, and why did I need, why involve an outsider, right? So nothing more than that need be, need be done. I wasn't quite sure why someone of that caliber would come in and say they want to change things and not have ideas about what to change. I certainly would have done so in that and those shoes with the level of experience and understanding of 21st century policing. So that was a little daunting to me. And I would have preferred more specificity about an agenda to change if that were the direction that somebody wanted to make or improvements that needed to be had. So I felt there was a little bit of weakness there. And I also would rather see someone who was more, more local, more tied in, more part of the community rather than a commuter to the community, if you will. I think that's important for us, given that we have other strong candidates. Certainly, if we hadn't had other strong candidates, he would have been a very strong candidate. So that led me to wrestling with the decision between Deputy Chief Cullen and Lieutenant Michael Luth. And boy, I don't think I've had a decision on this board that I've wrestled with as much as this one. And not only sought out phone calls from, but received phone calls from and emails more than that. And I was actually quite surprised. I was actually quite surprised with the level of reasonableness in these people's voices and ideas, the level of acceptance of two good candidates that we have. Certainly, the level of respect and appreciation that Deputy Chief Cullen has is beyond par. And likewise, and please don't get this wrong way, I was pleasantly surprised to see that the support and reputation that Michael Luth enjoys in this town is equally as held in high regard. And that was something I was not expecting and was really, really happy to hear. Honestly, I felt like the best candidate would be a blend of both. I think there are skills that they both maintain, the Groton needs, and that if we could find a way to have co-chiefs, that would be the way to go. But I can't have both ways. I always have to make a decision, I know that. I weighed the longevity of the current department person, current demideral department, and the legacy left behind by our former chief way beyond my expectations. And it's very, very difficult for me to have come into this wanting to see Jimmy Cullen as our next chief more than anything else, and not finding a way that I could rationalize that decision, given the other factors involved. As Mr. Geiger did, I had played a tremendous amount of weight into all my matrices and analysis on a social, political, empirical leadership managerial police force style. I appreciated hearing through the grapevine that many members of the department were, would be accepting of Mr. Luth. And I appreciate those who are willing to be strong enough to send that message out and give us that honest feedback and communication, as well as I appreciate those who took the opportunity to explain how much they've appreciated working under and with Deputy Chief Cullen over the past years. So in the final analysis, I don't see how it's possible for me to decide on a candidate that isn't Michael Luth. I think that either way we go, both candidates have ramp time. I would love to see a partnership between those two individuals, and I think the Groton Police Department and Groton Fire and Safety and all of our town would be incredibly, incredibly strong and benefit from the partnership, the relationship those two might develop as chief and deputy chief, if that's how it works out. But I guess I'm in concurrence with the other members and Mr. Luth. And I am actually surprised that we all ended up on the same place. So that says something, and I hope that signifies something to the, to the town because I know this will be a challenging decision for many, many people, as much as I know it'll be a challenge, a acceptable decision to many, many more.
So I'll stop pontificating and let the board continue.
If I may, just say one thing. If the board is going to make a motion tonight for an appointment, I would ask you to make the appointment contingent on two things, successful background investigation and successful salary negotiations, which the board will be entering executive session later this evening to give direction on those negotiations moving forward. I've contracted with Police Chief Warren Ryder of Bloxborough to do the background investigation of the selected candidate tonight, and that would have been whoever you selected. So he's ready to go first thing tomorrow morning. He thinks it'll take about two weeks to get it done. So I want that to weigh in on your motion tonight as well. So that's what I would ask the board to do. And then I would ask the board to excuse me once you take a vote for about 10 minutes.
Mr. Geiger, you have a question?
No, I want to make sure everyone here and everybody in the TV audience understands that the person that we select tonight will begin negotiations probably tomorrow or the next day on a contract. And in parallel to that, the chief will do the background investigation. The board of selectmen will not sign a contract until we get the report from the background investigation and we're comfortable with it. So there's some concern that we might be moving too fast, but we need to keep going and doing these two things in parallel where you still can't close the contract unless this has been done, I think is the best approach for the town and a good one.
Yes, please. I move that the select board appoint Michael Luth, the next chief of police for the town of Groton pending a successful background check and successful salary negotiation.
Yeah, discussion, John, or contention, or challenge?
I'm not sure appoint is yet the right word. I think he's our first choice.
I think you're going to make an offer of appointment subject to those two things. I think that's what you said.
That's what I said, but that's.
That's what you meant.
So Dom, the motion on the floor is to make, Josh's move to make an offer of appointment to Mr. Luth pending outcome of successful background check and contract negotiations.
Correct.
And it has been seconded by Ms. Pine.
No.
And Ms. Mugian, objected to by Mr. Geiger.
No, I didn't realize someone had seconded. Well, I'm also.
Okay. All right. Good. Any other discussion, Allison, yes?
I just think it's important that the motion say contract negotiations, not salaries.
Contract negotiations, yeah.
Yeah, you did. I just.
I made it salary, too. It's contract.
I said contract.
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
And that the contract was.
Okay. Are there any further discussions? All right, hearing done, a call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstaining? Okay.
Don't turn it on. Presumably, he could have been watching a double.
No, I'm sure. I would be if I was.
I'm going to take care of that in a moment. Let's let the room clear up.
Most of the candidates for the other.
Yeah. The next item, and we're actually a little early for it, by five minutes, which is okay because.
No, we're not.
Oh, I apologize. I'm reading that clock backwards. Wow, look at that.
You've got magic glasses there.
You know, I keep trying to get out of this meeting by nine o'clock. So we have a review and interview applicants for the Parkland Task Force Study Committee. And before we get into that, we've had a process typically, which is involved where we will vote on candidates, you know, pick your top five choices, and usually, it's pretty clear to see maybe three or four of those candidates are through, and then we might have to vote again on people who didn't quite make a four or five cut, or there was the ties on. I'm open to, courtesy of the board, discussing that. I'd like to get that dealt with, the process selection dealt with, and I know we're going to interview people, and I apologize if you don't mind waiting just a moment for us to get through the voting process, unless the board would like to interview candidates and then talk about the voting process. You guys okay with the way I want to do it, right?
Okay.
So I've seen this done many different ways. The other, the other way I'm willing to see this done is multi-voting, where you rate your first, certain third, fourth, and fifth by a number, and then we add those numbers up, and those come out the top. But that requires a few rounds, and I don't like it as often in a political environment as I do in a business team environment. Does anybody have another option for the way they'd like to select, democratically select members of the committee? Josh?
If we're going to change the process that we've always used, and the board needs to, under our policies and procedures, adopt a policy for how to appoint when you have multiple individuals apply for a position, and whether it be a weighted policy, one member, one vote, or how we currently do it, to deal with appointments on a weekly or monthly basis of different boards and of a different set of standards is not a good way to conduct our selection board. That's.
Becky?
Do we have a written policy about how we do this?
Do you recall, Harverson?
Allison, do you ever?
Well, while she searches.
We have a history of, yeah.
I actually, it was not very clear what you were describing as the way that we have always done it. So could you clarify about that?
The way that multi, when there's a multi-member board, and the way it usually gets done is, if there's five members, each individual person will choose five, and then you tally those up, and let's say somebody gets five votes, clearly that person has been selected. Let's say somebody gets, you know, three people get five, three people get four. And if you get down to where you have five people with five votes, clearly that's who the board should, that's who the makeup should be. If you have two people with five and four people with four, then you have to vote again on those four candidates and to select your top three because you don't have, you have a tie.
So each of our five votes needs to go to a different individual, correct?
Yes.
I couldn't throw off five.
You can't throw all five at one person. Correct, right. Five different individuals.
I have to understand all my options.
That way, that way you end up with majority of the, you end up with the best combination of the majority of the board's decision.
I have some comments. I don't, I didn't understand, I don't think that there is a written policy. I know there's been a practice of that kind of voting. I did a lot of thinking about this. Actually, I've been thinking about it for years, having seen it, how it plays out in the, everybody just vote, choose your, your top five or three or whatever it is that you're appointing. And I think that we would end up with a better and more diverse committee if we were to rank our five, not just vote for five, but rank them and rank them in what to some people sounds counterintuitive, but give a five to your first choice, a four to your second choice, three to your third choice, and then total the numbers. And that might save us from the multiple voting scenario.
That's actually multi-voting?
Okay. I don't know the title. I'm happy to have a name for it. So I would propose that we use that tonight, and then maybe we should write a policy to say that's how we'll do it in the future.
So the only difference, the only difference in that is that you end up, you almost force multiple rounds because you're going to end up with people, unless someone, unless five people get 25, which can't happen, and you end up with people that get, you know.
Now, aren't we going to then appoint the top five vote-getting number-getters?
What if you have people that are 15, 14, 13? You can't. You can't do that because those people are too close. That's not the way multi-voting works.
We're appointing five people.
But you're, but you're ascribing numbers one through five. Let's say we all choose a different person, one through five, same five names, but each of those does it in a different order, and they all end up to six, right? Or they all end up to sevens.
So?
So you have a tie. You can't choose anybody.
If we have five of them, we choose them.
Not if there's eight people and they all get sevens. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, I guess I would be interested to see how it happens the first time we.
I'm happy to do that. Like I said, I've practiced running those. I find it challenging in political environments. It's much easier in a small team. Go ahead, Allison.
So I guess first, just to throw out there, I'm a little surprised or disappointed, if you will, that we're having this conversation now. This is something we should have figured out before we had 10 folks sitting here. Our policies and procedures document says that the board will interview candidates seeking an appointment for the first time to boards with permitting authority, positions with more than one candidate, and all elected positions being filled due to a vacancy. So I think these are positions with more than one candidate, and our policy is to interview them, but.
Right. It doesn't talk about selection, though. Is that accurate?
Right. I don't know whether your intent is to do a round and then interview a subset or to interview all 10.
We would not do a, before we interviewed. I'm just trying to make sure we understand the voting process.
That makes me a lot more comfortable with this.
Apologize if that wasn't clear.
Yep.
John?
I would, one, like to see a list on the chart over here of all the current candidates because.
We had two more.
They're not all on.
The other two are on there. I just checked the email. They've been added.
That's the 10.
Yeah, they're 10 are up there. It's been not modified.
Right. So that's all of them.
That is all of them.
Well.
I modified to pack it.
All right.
It's not the same, but it is.
Yeah, and I say, you know, let's not spend the rest of the night arguing about how we're going to do it. Let's move on.
Let's move on, anyway.
Exactly.
All right. Shall we call them in order? Is.
Just as a reminder, we're looking for five.
I move.
Yeah, we will.
So how are we going to do the interviews? I'm sorry.
We'll start the interviews, starting by who's first on the list. So there's Peter Maya here. I don't see him. How about Brooks? You're here. Would you like to come up to the table, please?
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that we ask each of the candidates the same question? Why are you interested in this committee and what do you bring to this town?
Without objection, I think that's a reasonable question.
Is five, five is our number, correct?
Five is the number we're trying to fill.
Plus the two non-voter.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Hi, Brooks, please.
Thank you. I've been resident of Groton for over 30 years and am very concerned about public safety in various aspects. I don't have experience directly in that field, of course. However, I have served on the Building Committee and the Housing Authority. However, I have served on the building committee and the housing authority, which I'm still on, and the couple of not necessarily important committees, the selection committee for a polling place, and the election conduct board, which we gestated for a long time and gave birth to nothing, as I remember. So...
I think the second part of that question is, why are you interested in being on, or did you...
I sort of covered that. As a citizen, I'm concerned for both operational and financial concerns of this.
Okay. Anything further from the board?
Yeah. What's your financial background in terms of understanding cost analyses concerning proposals to expand the department? How would you use your background to analyze that?
Mostly off the top of my head, using my intelligence, but in the, both the housing authority and the building committee, we did this building for Lornin Lost Lake Fire Station. We did a lot of that kind of thing.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thanks. Is John Riley here? Don, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been here for 30 years. Been here for...
Three.
A little over three. I'm a full-time state police officer, been on the state police 33 years. Everywhere I've ever lived, I've put everything into the community, sometimes as a police officer. Also, come from a long line of firefighters. My dad's a firefighter, my son-in-law's a firefighter, I'm a middle guy. Becoming a firefighter, I'm call firefighter in town, so I want to put that out there also. I have no interest in becoming a full-time firefighter. As a matter of fact, I have a lot of interest in becoming a retired state police officer also. Very soon, I hope. I have, I was assigned to Mass Port Fire, I'm assigned to the airport. Don't believe everything you read in the newspapers, or see on the news. I was assigned to Mass Port Fire. I have an extensive network in the fire service that I would plan to use to evaluate whatever we need in town, whether, particularly on the manning issues and the staffing issues. I've been involved in the cruiser bids for the state police. I oversaw the state police cruiser to $10 million. That was in 97. I've been doing this a long time, but I do have a small budget for the small unit I run. But my main, my main interest is the community, the safety of my neighbors. Being a call guy, I'm, I hear and pay attention, I go to all the calls that I'm able to go to. I, I've always loved the fire service. Always, and maybe that sounds kind of corny, but I've always loved the fire service, mainly because my dad was my best friend, and that's what he did. I've been at firehouses since I was a little kid, not just liking red trucks or everything else. I don't have a background in fire science, nor do I have a background in the budgets, but I've been involved in a lot of the budgeting with purchases in the state police, the command posts and such like that. But my, my interest is the safety of the community, and I think I could look at it with respect to the costs, too, and what it's going to cost taxpayers, too. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to run into this meeting and say, we need to hire 17 full-time firefighters. That's, that's not me. That's not why I came. But there's a balance, and that's, I want to be part of finding that balance for the department. I think right now, and I've been around 33 years in public safety, assigned to Mass Port Fire. You guys have some of the best, highly committed, full-time firefighters that I've ever been associated with, and the same goes for the call department. In the city where I've worked, in Mass Port where I work, there are people collecting checks that call themselves firefighters. You guys have firefighters. You don't have anybody just collecting a check. That's what they live, breathe, and love, and I want to see them prosper. I want to see the department serve the community well, and I want them to be served well, too. So, it's a safety issue all around.
Absolutely. Point of clarification, Mark, did we remove the call firefighter issue from the charge?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, you did.
John?
Please clarify how long you've been a call firefighter here?
Moved into town, I don't, I keep saying three, it's probably four. So, about...
Just get it in the ballpark.
Three and a half years, three years. I think they have it over there, three years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Kane. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
I'm here in a little, little red light, thanks to everybody. Pass it on.
Have you heard the question?
I have.
Thank you.
So, here, I've been in town well over 30 years. Three sons have graduated from the high school, it's on the notes. I recently had my first taste of this kind of environment as a member of the recent municipal audit, and I thoroughly enjoyed participating in that. As far as this goes, I think this is really a very important item here for the town. I mean, successfully, if you will look at it and say, well, we don't know, is it broke? It doesn't seem to be. Everything seems to be working fine. We have two private schools in town that haven't complained about response times or anything, as far as I know. I'm a little concerned, though, as we move forward, we're now going to have Indian Hill. We're going to have a major event-driven place with 3,000 people coming to town very frequently. I don't know if that changes the need for call versus full-time. So, coupled with that, we also have had a recent audit of the fire department, which I have not seen. So, I guess I'm looking forward to the chance of finding out what the audit review was of the fire department, and then being part of the committee that says, is it broken? Is it time to make this transition? And then as a retired person, I'm going to be affected by the tax rates as well. So, I think I can be a good spokesman for that. So, that's, that's my motivation, and I'd like to get the job.
We asked the same question. Financial background?
Actually, I was a finance agent at college. My career was sales of a fairly sophisticated electronic switching equipment. So, I think I can handle the finance aspects. John?
Just to help a little bit, I have seen the Midas report.
Yeah.
And my take on it is, it basically says, what we're doing, we're doing very well. It didn't necessarily go into, are we doing the right thing?
That seems like a reasonable starting point.
In terms of coverage and all the rest of that. So, I believe the work that this committee is going to do is significantly different from what the Midas consultants did.
I lent it as a base point.
No, no, I'm not correcting you. I'm just trying to help you understand, because you said you hadn't seen it.
Right.
How it's different, how what we're asking for is different from that.
Josh?
John, I'd like to ask you this question, and I'd like to ask the chair, if you can get back to the other two candidates on this one, very quickly. We have a very aggressive timeline on this task force, and will you be available all summer to make multiple meetings, or will you be going away that would not allow you to make meetings?
I plan on being on vacation on the Cape for a two-week period, starting July 28th. But as, when I was at the audit committee, I didn't miss a meeting.
Could you call in while you're on vacation if there was a meeting?
I'd be more likely to get in the car and come up and go.
Well, we have remote participation. We can do it by phone. Let's just say we prefer.
One or the other, but I'd be more likely to come to the meeting.
Out of fairness, and I'm writing these questions down, so we ask everybody, apologize.
I will be around all summer.
Yeah.
I'll be around all summer.
Thanks. That's okay. It's important.
If I'm appointed, I wouldn't miss it.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Monat. Did I say that correctly? I apologize.
Wait, all right. It's not logical.
Yes, we did. He said he'd be available no matter what.
Okay.
Sorry, excuse us. Yeah, Ryan, hello, welcome.
Hello.
It's a new face. I think it's a new face.
Well, it's an interesting thing. I've been in town since September of 2013, moved here with my wife and three children in the school system. My family is from here, Lost Lake area. My great-grandfather moved here early 1900s, raised my grandmother, and then my mother, oldest of seven girls, so I have a lot of family who still lives in the area, specifically Lost Lake. So, this has always been my surrogate. I was raised in Littleton, but spent quite a lot of summertime...
I know that much.
In Lost Lake. I hope you wouldn't. So, I feel I have a very strong connection to the town in that regard, and coupling with that, I'm also a professional full-time firefighter/paramedic in a neighboring community. Started my career in 1997 as a call member of the Littleton Fire Department, went on to become full-time there, and then subsequently moved to the town of Westford, where I currently serve as a full-time firefighter/paramedic. So, I feel like I have a good perspective on how things are, having come from a call department, and now in a full-time situation, so...
So, you have that experience at both the Littleton Department, which is hybrid mode like Groton's place, as well as the Westford, which I understand is a full, full-time?
We still have call members. They're not utilized nearly as much as certainly a town like Groton, but even Littleton, and things have changed over the years. I've been there 14 years, and there's a lot less of involvement now, just because it's the way of the system.
Sure. Okay. What's your financial background?
Other than my understanding of how capital projects, financial projects within the department works, I'm kind of outside of that, where I'm not of rank, I'm not a chief or anything like that, but I feel I have a good understanding of how that kind of stuff works, specifically within public safety. I can't speak to every aspect of town government, but I feel like I have a strong understanding of and respect for and appreciation for balancing needs versus wants and so forth in regards to that.
Great. And your availability?
I am not going to be going on any vacation this summer, and my wife and I both work full-time, so if I'm unavailable, it's only because I'm probably on duty, but I can certainly make, you know, I won't be the one to not have a meeting because of that, so...
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Top of the other column, Ani Foley.
Hello, and thank you. We recognize that you are transferring from another, seeking to transfer from another committee, if you will. So, please, why does the fire department task force interest you?
So, I actually did not know that this task force was happening until I was reached out to and asked to consider, and I'm, you know, I don't, I don't, it seemed to have sort of come out of nowhere for me. I was sort of also, in the same way that John was, looking, I thought that the fire department audit had done some of this analysis and would have given some information to inform a decision like this. So, again, you know, it's good to know that it answered some questions, but didn't ask, like, what are we not doing? So, I'd like to better understand that from just the perspective of public safety, but also from the standpoint of safety of our public servicemen and women. I think it's, they're both equally important, and I don't know what the considerations or issues were that sort of spurred this question. I'd like to understand it better. I've also, with John, worked on the municipal audit committee, so I have some experience with the town. I'm relatively new to the town. We got here in 2015? Been here about two and a half years. And, you know, I want to, we want to build our roots here, we want to live here, we want to grow, want our children to thrive, so we need it for us. We have a personal interest in, I have a, I think about my husband, too. We both really feel like we have a personal interest in making this town a better place for our children to grow. In terms of my financial background, I got a lot of financial background. I've been a CFO of a $20 million organization. Currently, my work is in business strategy. I do cost analyses, price analyses, federal funding analyses, value proposition analyses. So, you know, my interest is in not just understanding the costs, but really understanding the value and what the risk is for not making a decision, or for deciding that we should move and make an investment. So, I feel like I bring some, some practical knowledge, as well as this personal interest knowledge of wanting to make this town better for everyone. In terms of my availability, I am away the last, the second to last week of August, and I will be unplugged entirely, so I can't even call in.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just ask what you meant about transferring from a different committee?
I can answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I've also been appointed to the Prescott School Committee.
The Oversight Committee.
The Oversight Committee.
Yes.
That was over a year ago, and there's been no activity. I, my involvement in the town, I want it to be meaningful, and my feeling has been that I've, you know, I've reached out, and it wasn't sort of because I haven't asked, but there, I understand there was an issue that needed to be resolved, and it's been a year, and I feel like my personal interest in serving is not to be a part of something by name only. I'd like to make a difference and be meaningful. So, if this is something that where I can contribute to and have a meaningful impact, I'd like to do that versus just sitting on a committee with no action.
And if that committee becomes, the action time shows up, will you consider it again?
I, at this point, I've...
Yeah, we can't ask every candidate that, so we should apologize.
That's fine.
We should move on. Thank you. Jennifer Evans. Hi.
So, I think I know most of you. John, maybe not as much. Been in town for 29 years, Board of Assessors. My interest in this committee actually comes from, I've been involved in a couple of NASA studies, and I have one, if anybody's looking for, you know, some nighttime reading here. Shouldn't take long, where we did a cost-benefit analysis of how much money should you spend to save the world from asteroids, is what it comes down to. And so, this is sort of at a whole different level, but in a way, there's actually a lot of parallels, right? So, the asteroid study, and the, and I was, I was up to my eyeballs deep in it, but we did this whole, you know, first defining, you know, really what is the problem, which in like, in the case of this fire thing, it would be, you know, how, you know, how many people, risks, what's out there, what's happening? You know, then, then we had another whole chapter, like, what are your possible solutions? And there's multiple solutions, and then going through and doing the, you know, financial, what does it cost to implement these solutions? What does it, you know, what is the, you know, we have a whole chapter in here, a whole section on, you know, VSL, the Value of a Statistical Life, based on economics, and you get down to this overall, like, you know, here's a curve, here's what you're going to get out of this financially, and there should be multiple points on it, right? And I think that it's an interesting background that I think maps well to this, and, you know, I think I bring some, you know, a different perspective to the table, be interesting in helping. Been around for a while. Availability, I think, you know, Fourth of July week, which is sooner than you guys are ever going to get it all organized, so it's not all that relevant.
Okay. I think, I think that was an explanation, your financial background makes it into why you're interested, right?
Yeah. Oh, my financial background is, I'm actually an engineer with a strong statistics background, not so much straight-up finances, but not afraid of numbers and spreadsheets, that's for sure.
And your membership on Board of Assessors doesn't have any financial issues at all? I would think there's strong financial concerns there, right?
Actually, by the time we get to it, it's, like I said, it's a spreadsheet and some statistics and standard deviations, really. It's, it's not even so much the financial aspect. I don't view it that way. I see it as math and standard deviations, but...
Okay, anybody else? Everybody good? All right, thank you, Jennifer. Next on our list is Michelle. I don't see Michelle in the room.
Michelle couldn't make it tonight. She had a previous appointment. She sends her regrets, but she thinks you all know her.
Okay, Andrew Saval?
All right.
How are you?
Good. All right, so the, I actually think it's covered when it comes down to the financial background, because I really don't have a large financial background. I have, I'm fourth generation in town, never been on any board, and talking to a few friends, they, someone brought this up to me and I thought it would be nice to actually try serving the town, giving back a little bit to the community. I owe a pretty sizable debt to the fire department in my life. Last year, I had a house fire and they came and helped us out, whole family, they helped relocate us for a period of time. Everything was fine, we turned out, everything turned out great. Now live in West Groton in another house and we love it. Basically, that's all I was looking to do is just see if I can help out the community. That's about it.
And what's your availability?
Anytime. I have three boys and work full-time.
Those things seem to be... Just my experience, but...
Two of them are teenagers that are never around.
Okay.
One of them's just...
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any?
Do you qualify for that?
I'm not.
All right, and Jack Petropolis?
Good evening. So I think you wanted to know why I'm interested, what I bring, what my schedule is and what my financial background is. So why I'm interested is, I pretty much started this project three or six years ago when I was involved in the fire station building committee. And we had to decide then whether or not we should include bunks for firefighters when we didn't have a full-time fire department. We had a, sorry, 24/7 full-time fire department. And we had to do the analysis then of will we, will we sometime need it? And I'll go into a little bit more about that later, but being involved in this part of the project puts an end to that initiative. It allows me to put a cap on that, on that project where I can help to determine whether or not this is the right time to staff those bunk rooms overnight. So that's the primary reason I'm interested. And I'm also interested because I believe I have some skills that can really help to not make a good decision, but give the right information to other people to make a good decision. And that's the thing that I think I can bring to this. I think I can bring an analytical perspective. I don't think that this is going to be so much about specific skills in the industry. We have, we have subject matter experts for that. We have a financial person in the form of the town manager and we have the fire chief who can bring, who can tell us what the department needs. What we need, I think, here is people who can help to assess the problem and frame it. The problem is, should we go to a full-time fire department? What would the benefit of that be? What would the cost be? And how do we weigh the cost versus the benefit? That's really the problem. And I think the challenge of this group is to find ways of framing the answer to that problem so that people like you can make educated decisions about should we or shouldn't we? But more importantly, so that people at town meeting can make those decisions. Because ultimately, I don't think this, I don't believe this committee should make a recommendation, yes or no, should we do this or not? I think this committee should be able to say, here's what we believe a full-time fire department can accomplish. Here's the, here are the lives we think it can save, here's the suffering we think it can prevent, and here's what we think that that will cost. And then people can decide whether or not that cost, that benefit is worth that cost. So that would be my personal approach to this. In terms of availability, I'm quite available, but I'd also like to suggest that timeline of end of August or whatever timeline is somewhat artificial. There is no urgency to this decision. It should be made quickly, but the idea of assigning a timeline and working to it would likely result in a decision that is not as well thought out as a timeline that is scheduled against what's required to make a good decision. And lastly, in terms of my financial capabilities, this is what I do for work. All day long at my work, I am asked to determine whether or not a certain initiative is worth doing and whether the compromise of other things is, are worth giving up in order to do that initiative. So I have to figure out what the benefit of that is. Sometimes that's not really straightforward. Sometimes it's not in dollars and cents. Sometimes it's many other things. And this, this is going to be quite a challenge because the objective here is not in dollars and cents. The objective here is in pain and suffering in lives and health. And we have to measure that against cost. And I believe that I can help to frame that in a way that you as a board can appreciate, will help you to make good recommendations, and more importantly, as I said, the way town meeting can appreciate. Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, sorry? You have any questions?
No, it's okay.
No, my question is...
It's fine. Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it, thank you. Becky, yes?
So if we each just choose five people, if I'm understanding correctly, the past practice, and then those just get totaled up and we end up with a committee? Is that right?
That's one way to do it, yeah.
Okay. I would personally prefer to do it with ranking. And I guess I could make a motion to that effect.
Unfortunately, that's under the order of the chair, and so I'll take input. Ultimately, it's up to me to decide the rules of order. So making a motion may not be, although I do want to hear from other people, which is why they'd like to proceed. Josh?
Yeah, I mean, I've thought about the ranking and we have to pick five, so if we all picked five individuals, the first choice, in my opinion, would be worth five, second, fourth, third, three, fourth, two, and fifth, one, then you can aggregate scores and cross the various members and be able to come up with a committee. I don't think you're going to end up in a problem situation, just because you were talking about that.
Yeah, no. There's challenges in there, but we'll see if we cross them. Allison, you're okay with whatever side of John? Do you understand what's been proposed? So what's being proposed, and I'm in favor and I'm happy to run it, is a, is a tiered selection process where you, the individuals end up with the most points are likely, are going to be on the committee. If there are no clear, if we get down to the weeds and there are no clear, we have one-point difference between a couple of people, we may wish to revote those individuals. But that's generally because that means it's too close to call and you may want to have an opportunity to revote on those, yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely, please.
So I'm just thinking that if...
We need a, I'm sorry, we do need a microphone for you.
Can I just talk louder?
No, it's for, it's for the, it's for the people at home. They can't hear unless it's on the microphone.
I'm just thinking about the ranking strategy and it seems to me that if one person gave a five and another person gave a one, but then someone was on everyone's list as like sort of their fifth choice, even though everyone wanted that one person, that person will get off the list because two people want it.
Statistically, that's a possibility.
That's, that's an accurate challenge with this, with this, with this process. Yep, you're absolutely right. Absolutely right. And I think everybody should take that into account. If you really want somebody, and generally it doesn't happen that way in multi-voting, generally that's not the case. Usually, multi-voting results in, and perhaps some sevens because statistically, but in my experience of multi-voting, usually you end up with people that everybody agrees on and nobody doesn't agree on.
Why are we changing the process that this board has used for years?
Because it's not documented policy and we should document policy going forward. Hey, yeah, go ahead.
When I was involved in this, when they pointed this personnel board, it was simply ranked who you want and then they added it up and the fives, with the fives, the fives, the fives, the fives. And by picking five people and giving them fives, I believe by definition, you're going to pop them out because to get down to one, to what was just mentioned, that I would not write, if I had five people all tied that I wanted and I could pick five out of this, I wouldn't want to give somebody a one. I'd rather give them all fives and then, the way the math works, it'll come out. And if you have to do a revote for the ones, you get the last two, then you do the last two. But I personally would not want to give somebody a one if I thought, then I see five good people up here. And that's how they did it with the personnel board and it worked out fine. That's how they do it.
The Conservation Commission, that's how you did it with the original town audit committee? I don't know why we're changing it.
Same thing, it's giving everybody ones.
I will just, I, the person that has proposed, as the person who has proposed this, I will say that I've thought about this for a number of years, watching our town function, and I don't think we have always come up with the best committees using this method. That's why I'm proposing that we do it differently.
John, do you have a stake in this?
Oh, I have a big stake in it.
Well, I think we...
There's several approaches here.
Yep.
And I'm, I'm thinking that spending a lot of time on the nuances may not be necessary. We pick one and we move with it.
So here's what I'm going to close. I'm going to say we move forward with how it's always been, and if we want to change that after the outcome, let's make a policy of how we're going to vote.
I definitely want it on the, on a future agenda, whether we rank order tonight or not. Obviously, we need to have discussed it, Mark.
Absolutely.
I didn't think it would be that big of an issue. I thought this would be a relatively straightforward way to do it that was similar to what we have done before. I had some other ideas, which I did discuss with the town manager and he suggested that they weren't so good, so...
Mark, can we please add this to a July agenda before we have to select another committee? Okay. Did you prepare anything in advance?
Mr. Chairman, in compliance with past practice, I came up with ballots for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
So take the one with your name on it and pass it down.
So are we going to rerank ordering them?
No, please vote ones, ones or fives are the same, doesn't matter. Everybody, top five choices.
How can we do it all the same way?
We're just checking five names.
That's correct, yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're all going to do it the same way. Everybody check five names, please. I'm sorry, I shouldn't get those wrong. That's actually yours. It's got your name at the top, John.
Oh, personalized.
Yes, yes.
That's really public records.
Yeah, we have to public record this.
Maybe even one more check, Mark.
Thank you.
I hope you haven't spent any of the money.
I know. Am I folding this?
Sure. Are we able to do any business without the town manager?
Tell me.
He can always fix it later.
Allison, would you be willing to lead a discussion on the goal compilation document?
Sure. I don't know whether it's something we can get up there. It didn't represent well in our packet. Basically, what I did was started in Excel and put in the Board of Selecting goals and then cut and pasted in department goals and then town manager goals. So you can see in the first column is kind of the statement of the goal. The next column is, is kind of how we would measure this or things on that nature. Then the last column is what the responsible entity is. Up at the top was, I still, McGurty's was still kind of hanging out there because I have no idea what implement Lexipol policies, where that would possibly fit. Some of these I started, you know, some of them were obviously very clear. Multiple folks mentioned identifying and understanding OPEB exposures. Some of the goals didn't fit in any other category. Obviously, you know, within the employees, a number of the goals were not, not personal goals, but they were to, you know, continue their training and become more educated in this or that. So when we get down to the bottom, you'll see there's kind of a catch-all category. You know, so I...
Other.
To an extent, yes. I don't know whether it's actually all the way down at the bottom or whether it's...
It can't be on the spreadsheet.
Right, so this, this was kind of my attempt to chunk things. By and large, I didn't feel like, and I think this was the point of doing this exercise, is that there didn't seem to be a lot of coordination. And that may be something we want to keep in mind as we move forward. I'm happy to try and answer questions. I don't know what people are looking for or where we're going with this ultimately.
Yeah, well, my question would be, what is our desired outcome from this exercise and this document? What are we trying to get to from here and what is the core feel, should be the desire? What's current board feel and should be desired outcome for this project?
What kind of a question? So Allison, we, I understand we as a select board had created these goals with the middle column benchmarks.
Right, so the ones that are...
And the who was responsible for them. So I understand that the three going across for the main goal, but then when you add in, in the goals from the department heads, is that what you got?
Right.
And then they didn't have any of the middle column data, right?
Correct.
So that, you didn't like invent any?
No.
There just wasn't any?
Exactly.
I confess that I did not have time to get through this whole thing because, like you said, it was a challenge to get it to read right on the computer.
And it doesn't, or at least to me, it didn't, there was no tremendous takeaway of the exercise. It's kind of a quasi-more organized matrix that really shows the lack of organization.
Well, one thing that stood out to me that has nothing to do with you is that the fact that we didn't ever have a goal about Prescott and we, that's something that we have had to spend quite a bit of time on. It just reminded me, it really should be there in our goals next year. I think it's useful, if only to see, like I say, I haven't read the whole thing, but if only to see that our departments are kind of doing different things necessarily than we are. And that, I'm not, I don't have a value judgment about that, but it might help us to understand a little bit better in the future, how to set goals that, you know, that are really our goals, that we can really implement, but that don't, I don't know, disagree with what the departments are doing.
Yeah, I mean, coming out of it, I felt like it might be more useful to have more of a, kind of an overarching structure so that we had, you know, five categories of goal, a financial goal, a government goal, a development goal, an employee, you know, something around those types of things. And then within that, we could have, you know, the select board goal, the town manager goal, department head goals, and hopefully, even by having them in those categories, it would start to correlate a little better. And it may ultimately be that I'm just not very good at this.
No, I think you were...
That may well be it.
Wait a minute, you're the best person to have done this. We know that.
Okay, so let's take a break. I apologize to the table. Let's, let's continue our process. So in the tally, we do have a three-way tie for the last two positions. So we'll cover the individuals who we would love to appoint to this committee if they'll accept. The first being Ani Foley, excuse me, the first and, the first and second would be Ani Foley and John Kane. The third person would be Peter Mayette. And then we have a three-way tie between Ryan Monat, Ryan Monat, see, I'm sorry, man. Jennifer Evans and Jack Petropolis. So we do need to have everybody vote again on two individuals. Maybe we should have our original tally sheets back and we can make a second choice amongst two out of those three?
I'll go buck up.
No. So again, your choices are between, you have to, need to choose two out of three. Ryan, Jennifer, and Jack.
Who is checking one?
Checking two.
Two.
We need to select two out of three.
Okay.
Don't check the same boxes.
I put mine to the left side in case that's...
Oh, that's a good idea. Close to the name.
Okay. All right. So John, please.
I look at this and I struggle with it a little bit. In my experience in trying to set up these initiatives, it's really important in the beginning to identify in a fairly detailed way what the outcomes, what is the outcome that's expected from this? And number two, how will we know when we get there? And number two, how will we know when we get there? And these all seem interesting and worthwhile, but I couldn't answer on any of them those two key questions. So that may help in the future when we're thinking about these things. Do we want something to look different? Are we looking for a report? What do we want the report to address? And in all cases, when will we know when we get there? And Mark knows, it's because we've already talked about the Midas in our report and various ways to go about monitoring what we're doing and when we're going to have and so forth.
Josh?
I've struggled with this for 12 years. It's very tough and I think that we need a better format where we can measure metrics in terms of success of a goal. And Mark's done a very good job working to try and foster and make this move forward, but I think there's got to be a better way of doing what we're doing. And Allison, you know, certainly tried to put this together and what you did showed the struggles.
Exactly.
That exist within what we're trying to do.
And that's, I mean, I'm happy to kind of do a draft of potentially a next step and kind of try and come up with categories or, you know, ideas for how we might do that in the future. I don't know, we may need to change timeline timelines a little bit so that, you know, potentially the select board can select goals and then they can trickle down. You know, I think it's unrealistic that we're going to have full cohesion in all of our goals, but, you know, if we could see, here's a select board goal, here's what the town manager is doing relating to that, here's, you know, two or three departments that have significant input, who are moving in that direction, that would be great. To me, this just really highlighted, as Josh said, the need to kind of step back and...
We need one more vote.
Refocus.
Reinvent the wheel.
Yeah. It's kind of a clunky wheel.
That's fine. So Mr. Chairman, you guys take one more vote. I think somebody should just make a motion, you don't have to do another ballot, but Ryan, Ryan, how do you pronounce that?
Monat.
Monat. Ryan Monat got four votes.
Thank you.
Evans and Patropolis got three votes each. So somebody should just make a motion for the fifth member of the committee and then take a vote.
Could one of us, could Ms. Evans, one of, Ms. Evans or Ryan drop out?
Of course you could.
I'd be glad to defer. You accept...
So solid.
Great.
So I'd ask the board to make a motion to appoint Anhee Foley, John Kane, Ryan Monat, Peter Mayette and Jennifer Evans to the Fire Department Task Force Study Committee.
So who?
I heard it Josh's time.
Doesn't matter, I don't care.
Any further discussion with...
And just, I might add that if, I've been on committees where after a while someone, for unforeseen reasons, does have to drop out, and I would assume that at that point we would actually ask Jack to join if someone, if that happened.
I think with all committees, we would advertise vacancy and see...
I think we have to follow our vacancy policy, don't we?
Do we have a vacancy policy?
Yes, in fact, didn't you bring it forward to the board?
We do.
Didn't you, you called out that we have a vacancy policy and made sure that we, we actually had a problem where we hadn't followed it and we had to reschedule the vote. So we should continue to follow those practices. So with thanks to everybody who came forward.
Thank you, everyone.
We didn't vote yet.
Yes, I know. May I have a vote, please?
Thank you.
All is in favor of the committee as designated.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
You know, I need some reading on vacation.
I think Tim will be interested in it, so.
Back to this, back to this subject that we are still on, I believe.
Yeah, can I contribute something?
Sure. Just didn't, I wanted us to be, to not be moving on to something else, I mean.
That's correct, no, we won't be. So I actually applaud Allison for taking initiative or the challenge of putting this together. And in my opinion, it highlights that things aren't meshing and that things aren't aligning, right? I also understand the challenge of making that happen. And your idea about the timeline is 100% correct. The company I'm at, which is a 30,000 employee company, there's something called B2 Mom, and that is started by the CEO. And then it trickles down to his reports and then their reports and then, and then her reports and then, and all the way down. And we all have deadlines and what we have to do. And we have to take something from our bosses and then something of our own and go and make it our own, right? But in the way, those top goals of the company, in that case, are listed down. That's a very, very, very administratively burdensome, thank you, yes, heavy, I was coming with a better word than heavy, but heavy task. And we have whole departments dedicated to that.
Well...
Yeah.
We don't.
Right. We don't have that here, so...
We need to look at this and come up with, you know, what we can manage. I think we can make some good changes.
I agree.
But it has to be something that we can do on our current, you know, with our current resources.
Right, without taxing the administration.
There are consultants that would gladly come in and do this, but...
I know, it was a tax on a resource. So without tax on a resource. So I'm open and I would appreciate and hope that we can have contributions from members on ideas and ways to do this. And once we have enough of them, maybe, Mark, you can collect them and we have a few over time, we can add this back to the agenda, because this isn't going to be solved tomorrow. It's also not a priority, right? It is, it is something I think is important, but I don't think it's a priority. Not that you didn't spend excellent time on it.
That's one of your goals for the year.
Yeah, it is one of our goals. We should get to it.
And I do feel like, I mean, it's not a priority in the sense of selecting a police chief.
Right.
But, you know, I think it's something that's important. I think it, you know, it really highlights perhaps why it sometimes seems like we're all going in different directions. And that this is something we could make progress on, not get it perfect, but make progress on, you know, in the next few months.
So how about this? I would like, and Becky, I know you still have something to comment, I'm just, I would like to put it on our continuing items list. And then, once a month, I like, I'll put it, I'd like to see it on an agenda where we at least discuss if there's been ideas, what's come forward and if we, how we want to, if we have any more jelly and how to proceed. And so the next one I would put on would be our second meeting in July, maybe, which is, I think, four weeks from now anyway, or five weeks from now. I'm sorry, Becky, please, go ahead.
I was just going to go back to the original motivation, which was, how do we, what can we do to make sure that we as a board and the operation of the town that we are overseeing are heading in the same direction on things? To make sure that their goals and our goals align, I think is important. And not that I think we need, you know, reams of paper sort of for, only for the purpose of documenting something, but I think that that is an important goal.
All right. Continue on. We should go back and discuss the town manager policy, town manager review policy, excuse me.
So Mr. Chairman, if you go to, what's the page in the packet? I lost the table, John.
11?
Page 11?
I think so.
Yes.
If you go to page 11, in your packet, you'll see a red line draft of the, of the policy. Town Council updated this policy to reflect the recent Supreme Judicial Court decision on doing these performances. This complies with it. I'd asked the board, the board had previously reviewed this and asked me to reschedule for a future agenda, which I've done. I'd asked the board to vote to adopt this policy tonight, this revised policy tonight.
I have a question.
Becky.
So since I wasn't on the board when the prior policy was in use, reading it...
Actually, you were. You gave it to town manager review this past time.
I know, but then we did...
But this one is a little muddled.
But then it got preempted from the steps that used to come after that.
I see, okay.
So what I don't see in the policy was, has to do with the steps that used to come after that, which with the compilation, and I guess, I think I heard it said that the compilation, that members would have an opportunity to say, well, you didn't include something that I said that I think needs to be in there.
That's at the public session.
And that would have happened, that's what I'm asking, how that happened in the past.
Yeah, please, Josh, there's more experience.
So had the policy that we had in place been allowed to go through, I would have performed a compilation. I would have taken what in my opinion were the highlights of each section of each board member's comments and put them into that compilation and then presented it at the public meeting where we would discuss it. And during the course of that discussion, before voting on the release of that, if something had been missed by an individual board member, then that board member could then bring up that issue and ask the rest of the board whether to amend the compilation to include that comment.
I see.
Is that fair?
And that's still in here.
Yeah.
Okay, since I didn't, I prefaced by saying I haven't been through this, let me ask you some questions.
The problem with the old policy is the interpretation, the Attorney General was that you guys would email your individual to the chair. That was where the violation would take place. Now, you send them to the director, the HR director, who will then take that and give it to the chair, and then the chair will compile. That way, there's no chance of the board commenting on it until the chair provides you in public session with the final policy. That's the issue.
Well, with a, with a, I guess a draft...
Draft version for you to debate and discuss inside if you're going to do it.
Well, I think we made comments and sent them back in, don't we?
You could do that at the public meeting, yes.
Not...
You can't do it individually. You would have to take the compilation and debate it at the public meeting because you can't review the town manager privately as a board. Well, you do it privately, but individually, but not as a board.
Another thing I was, all right, so another thing I was a little bit confused about is that it doesn't seem, maybe I'm not reading this correctly, but the way it happened this year, we each wrote our individual evaluations and we each met with Mark and he responded to each one individually. I don't see that in writing here.
That is step number, is it step number four?
Yeah, the board members are encouraged to sit down with the town manager and discuss the review with the performance evaluation town manager.
It doesn't say the town manager will respond to...
And the town manager doesn't have to, there is, it is, it is part of the, part of the form that allows him to do so. That's not part of the, part of the review policy, that's part of the form itself which allows him to respond. And I almost think that's part and parcel to personnel requirements that you can't just put a, put a review out there and have nobody have a chance to respond to it. I think so, I don't think we're conflating HR law with a board policy.
Right, but we are also apparently allowing the town manager to not respond at all?
All employees have that right to not respond at all.
Although down here below, it says that he will respond to the summary, right?
He'll have the opportunity to respond to section three.
Okay, well, so since it talked about it down there and it didn't talk about it at the individual level, that was just, I thought, a little bit curious.
It says, it says they're encouraged to do so, I mean, that's...
Encouraged to meet.
Encouraged to meet, yeah.
And there, it's not, and, but in the past, it generally has happened that, Mark, that you've responded individually.
I always do if I feel I need to respond.
I will say that I have seen some where he did not respond.
Correct.
And I've seen many employer reviews where they simply acknowledge a receipt of it instead of making a response to it. So, and both are valid situations, yeah, John?
Can we put four up on the, okay, so it says a draft evaluation of the board members to the town manager, okay? So, next principal public meeting of the board, following the town manager and chair's completion of initial draft evaluation and following the forwarding of the draft evaluation to the board members by the town manager, the chair shall disseminate a clean performance evaluation document to each board member. Each board member shall provide written comments on their blank evaluation form and return it back to the director. So we are writing some things down.
Yeah, but what happens...
Individually.
Correct.
Yes.
I fill out my self-evaluation, I give you each a copy, a clean copy of my self-evaluation, and then each one of you does a review on that, and then you turn it over to the, to the HR director, who takes them all and then provides them to the chair, who then does the compilation.
This seems to say that the next practical public meeting...
Yep.
...of the board, following the town manager and the chair completion of the initial draft evaluation...
That means his self-evaluation.
His self-evaluation.
It should be more clear.
But you're not doing it together. This would suggest that you were doing it...
No.
...jointly here. Okay, so...
And the reason it comes before is because we have to declare that we're doing this...
In public.
In public, that we're doing this process and that it's been done and we've given it to everybody to do.
It's very difficult to review, well, you guys have done it with the school committee members, I'm sure. You've done, or you've tried to do it last year with me.
Yeah, I did it one, it's been you.
We do that writing in private.
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct.
That's where I was...
The only process is changing.
Technically, when, in steps two and three there, Josh, you didn't actually write anything. It was just that you gave it to him, he wrote it, he gave it back to you, right?
No, he gave us, he gave a self-evaluation of himself in, over the past year.
Yeah.
At that juncture, it was then distributed in a clean copy from me to the remaining board members for you all to do your fill out.
Right, so, that's what I'm saying, steps two and three talk about you sort of participating in that and agreeing or something, but all you did was basically hand it on.
I don't think that's his self-evaluation, I think that's just the framework, the mechanism of the evaluation.
There's nothing added to it.
It's not after the town manager.
I mean, I took no words on it other than what existed.
This is, this is to state, this is to state that the town, that the chair has the obligation, responsibility to assure that the town manager knows that he has, he has to file a review form and make sure it gets done. Usually, that's never a problem. I will say this, usually the board is the, are the dinked ones, myself mostly, and...
I do my evaluation all the time.
And the town manager is very kind enough to give us extra time to respond. So this hasn't changed.
Right, it says that town manager and chair shall complete the evaluation. I was just confirming that the chair doesn't actually do anything other than have, hand it on, the sentence at number three.
Right, because the chair acting on, as a member of the board, does his own evaluation certainly, right? It would be unwise to, to interrupt the self-evaluation of the town manager, but...
I thought this was going to be the easiest thing.
I know, I know, that's okay. The substantive changes are that the board, yeah, the substantive changes are that the, that we're going to invite it, that we're going to give it back to the director of the HR instead of the board and that, and then we'll have an open session to review the compilation instead of a back and forth on that. It's all being in the public. Can we agree at least on the changes as written? Or do we need to change things that weren't prescribed to be changed earlier? Because this has been out before, we've all reviewed it, this is coming up a second time, and I hope we can do it. We have a comment from Judy, please, save me.
I thought, as it was by me, that I saw the word "select men" up near the top.
Wicked.
Oh, bad, bad.
Yes, we'll have to update the name of the board too.
Well, yeah, you also see...
In the preamble.
You also see "selectmen" that don't, no longer "selectmen."
Well, I'll fix the signature pages. If you vote something, I'll bring it back to you, I promise.
I kept telling you guys, go to Select Critter, totally...
Yeah, yeah.
Then we'd have luck directly.
Okay, I'd love to have a motion to approve this, please.
I move that we approve the amended town manager review policy.
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion? Allison?
It's not really discussion. I just want to be clear that in item number four, when it talks about our written comments and the blank evaluation form, that doesn't mean that we have to do this in paper, does it?
No, no, it's always, it's been electronic, yeah.
Thank you.
I did it in writing once, thinking that that's what had to be done. Remember what happened to it?
Exactly, and no one, no one appreciated that one.
Lost, that's right, lost, don't do it in writing.
Then it can be retyped, yeah.
That's right, I forgot about that.
Yeah, exactly what you said, I read it that way.
Brooks, we're about to vote, is there anything, this is new information?
I can ask this question after your vote, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, signal a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, I hear they're unanimous, Brooks, please.
I'm just curious, who is the HR director and how or from where is he selected or voted? voted?
So, the HR director is Melissa Dwyer, and she's right behind you.
That's him.
And she is appointed under the authority of the town manager ratified by the board.
Okay, so it's.
As a town employee, as a town employee, yes.
I don't remember this.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, at last week's meeting, the board reviewed the issue of when to call for a fall town meeting. We discussed either the dates of October 1st, 15th, or 22nd. As requested by the board, I reached out to Station Toomey of the PAC and the town moderator, Jason Kope, to determine their availability. All three dates work for all involved, so the board can decide on what date to use, and I'll bring back the official call either next week or Monday, July 9th. I want to tie seven and eight together because eight affects seven.
I will concur with that, please tie them together.
So, I sent this out to you earlier this afternoon by email, but I also printed out hard copies so that you can have it before you tonight of the draft bylaw from town council. And basically, that bylaw reflects what the board discussed last week, which would basically allow for cultivation, testing, and research in the GB and I districts in town. The board had talked last week that by doing it this way, it would negate the second step of the process, which is the, which is the vote as well. I will tell you that I got a little concerned with that, so I decided to research it, and I found out that if you ban any aspect, just one of the eight, it requires a two-step process. So, based on that, if the board still goes forward with this proposed draft article, you would need to do an election as well. So, my suggestion to the board tonight is that you tell me to bring back to you a call for the fall town meeting and a special town meeting within the fall town meeting for Monday, October 1st, with the second date being Monday, October 15th, if necessary. The middle date there, the eighth is Columbus Day, so that's a holiday.
So moved.
Second, however, I have some discussion.
Under discussion, Becky.
It's not the date, it's the bylaw, but we can vote on the date if we want.
Let's get the date settled and then close business, then we can talk about the bylaw, okay?
Yeah, sure.
Any further discussion from the board regarding the date? Anything from the public regarding the date? We are proposing October 1st as the beginning of the, of the fall town meeting with a special town meeting to discuss the marijuana question. The reason for that is because we can close a special town meeting, and that is considered done business, and then we can proceed to know whether or not we need to call for an election. So, we're trying to save money if we can. Are there any, any questions from anybody? Thank you, Connie.
My question is around the election. Could you please elaborate on that a little?
The election is November 6th. That's going to be the state election.
State election.
Yeah, and we have to notify the town clerk 35 days prior if there's going to be a ballot question that day.
Got it, thank you.
It'll be a separate election within that.
It'll be a separate ballot within the same election day.
Same election data, thank you, I get it.
But different ballot, different election technically, right?
And that'll only be called if this bylaw passes by two years' time.
Trying to save if we can, save the funds if it's not necessary.
I will tell you, if I may, the Attorney General, and I kind of cracked a joke to the town clerk today, the Attorney General has approved the marijuana bylaw you passed at the springtime.
Great.
Just in time, just in time for us to amend it.
Well, that's okay, at least we know.
Which means it's in effect.
It's in effect.
Clean and tidy.
Well, no, it's not in effect until December.
It is in effect.
No, it's in effect. The moratorium is over, we now have a bylaw.
Once we have a bylaw.
But as soon as you notify the planning board of this, and the planning board schedules a public hearing.
That's right, then we have time to go over here.
It stops the.
Oh, no, it's not in effect until July 1st, I thought.
The bylaw is in effect upon the Attorney General's ratification.
Yeah, but, but the state's permission doesn't, isn't.
Until July 1st, right, so.
But, but once we notify this, that stops.
Once the, once the planning board schedules a public hearing, this becomes the underlying zone and should have passed.
Oh, interesting.
It's unique to the planning board.
Correct. But that's once I notify them.
Yeah.
Did we vote yet?
Did we vote? Did we vote yet? We have not voted. All those in favor, signal a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have one absent, 4-0-0. Becky?
So, I know I'm not an attorney and this was drafted by the attorney, but on, on page two, the number five pursuant to the mass laws, the maximum number of establishments shall be consistent with the following provision, should say provisions, but A, shall not prohibit one or more types of marijuana establishment. I'm having a really hard time understanding how that's correct, because we are prohibiting certain aspects, certain types of marijuana establishment.
My guess is that it makes sense in the context of the whole thing, because we have C and missing stuff, but.
No, I mean, if you read all three, so shall not prohibit one or more, B is shall not limit the number to less than 20%, okay, we're good on that, and C is that the number shall not exceed three, that's what we decided. But I, I guess, would you just go back and ask him for sure?
Yeah, I think, I think basically, this is just regurgitating 94G, section 3B of the general laws, that those are the, those are the provisions within that, and I think that's why he's doing it, but I'll find out.
It really reads.
I think you got to go back and, this seems to me that it's related to if you're going to have a bylaw.
Right.
Without a vote.
Right.
If we vote, then you can actually keep things out. Follow me?
Yeah, but this is our bylaw and we are prohibiting.
But this is our bylaw as it was written for the last town meeting.
Right, which did not have limits, this now does.
So, it isn't yet in sync
Right.
with our plan of.
Because we are.
Going to the ballot.
I concur.
We do want to prohibit retail and other kinds of establishments, so I think that, just, please just go back and ask him to check that.
Yeah, I would table a vote on this particular item until that's been verified with the attorney, please, of town council, because I agree with the assessment here that that seems incongruent with our challenges. If it is congruent, we need to understand why and how.
And I believe that the question on the ballot is to approve the same document that was approved at the town meeting. It's not a simple yes or no.
Right.
They actually, they provide an identical content on the ballot, in the ballot itself.
For your education, we authorize the town manager to declare October 1st as a time of the special meeting within, so that they would be able to.
So, when I call, when I bring back the call, Josh, and say October 1st.
That's a great idea.
So, we're going to table this.
I'll bring it back.
To another night.
Yep.
Are we ready to move on to item number nine?
Which is what?
Which is the appointments of the select board and ratifying upon the town manager. So, that would be on pages 20 to 22.
Yeah, but I want to make a couple of corrections since this went out. Before I go through the list, we'll do like we did last week. Under the Affordable Housing Trust, we're going to, I'm going to ask for one appointment, I'm going to ask for an advertisement for a vacancy on that board. With regards to the Board of Registros, we're waiting on the Republicans to come back with a nominee, they have not provided us with one yet. With regard to the Community Preservation Committee, Richard Hewitt is reappointed, Brooks Lyman is a brand-new appointment based on a recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee. With regards to the Council on Aging, George Faircloth is very eager and he wanted to be reappointed, unfortunately, his term limited out. So, we didn't realize that, we were notified today. So, the Council on Aging is recommending Paula Martin to be, to replace George Faircloth. But we do have one vacancy on the council for an individual under 60 years old, so I'm going to ask for the.
So, the Council on Aging has special rules about term limits for their.
You can only serve six years consecutive.
Thank you.
What did you say about what they're recommending? I'm sorry.
They're recommending Paula Martin to that position.
Paula Martin?
Paula Martin.
Does she live in Groton?
Yes, lived in Groton for many, many, many years.
Oh, okay.
With regards to the Finance Committee, there is one vacancy, but that's been advertised, and I just wanted to let you know that. So, those are the, those are the updates. So, if I can.
Well, yes, it's a point of order.
Yep.
On the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yep.
Under the bylaws of the trust, the trustees, two of them must be either selectmen or the selectmen's designees, while the other three serve at large. Currently, Stuart Showman is serving as the selectman's designee. It would be my suggestion to have him be an at-large member as an appointment, thus opening the door for either another selectman or one of the candidates to be the selectman's designees, anybody who applies that way.
Gives you more flexibility.
Gives more flexibility. So, when we appoint, I would suggest doing that.
Yep.
So, we're going to hold off on that one for now?
Well, no, I'm going to ask you, let's just start with that one. I'd ask the board of selectmen to reappoint Stuart Showman as an at-large member of the Affordable Housing Trust with a term to expire in 2020. It's a two-year appointment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, good to go, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board of selectmen if I can read the names in and then have the board take one vote. I'd ask the board to appoint to the Commemorations and Celebrations Committee with a term to expire in 2019, Steel McCurdy, Bob Johnson, Don Black, Evan Boucher. Community Preservation Committee with a term to expire 2021, Brooks Lyman, Richard Hewitt. Complete Streets Committee with a term to expire 2019, George Barander, Ellen Backston, Michelle Colette, Peter Cunningham, Tom Delaney, Steve Legg, John Lorder, Kristen Von Kemp. I'd ask the board of selectmen to appoint to the Conservation Commission with a term through 2021, Marshall Jager, John Spigelsky, Eileen McHugh.
Remove.
Question, Becky?
Yeah.
All right, let's have a second first. All right, question?
So, I had a list that has different committees on it, which I think you must have sent around a while ago, and some of these committees are no longer here, like the Bylaw Review and Study Committee?
Board of Selectmen voted to disband those committees a few weeks ago.
Ah, I'm sorry, what was the other, and which were the others?
If you go to the.
I don't know what was she looking at, Becky?
Twenty, twenty, yeah. It gets, sometimes it's a detriment to be working off of paper, I acknowledge.
Okay.
But there was one that you read that wasn't on this list, commemorations?
Commemorations and Celebrations Committee.
It wasn't on this list at all that you sent out before.
I don't know why.
It was in the PAC that the guys sent out on Friday. All right, move forward. All those in favor, signal a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear they unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board to appoint to the Council on Aging with a term to expire in 2021, Paula Martin. The Economic Development Committee with a term to expire 2019.
Put out Richard.
Oh, Richard Martin, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee with a term to expire 2019, Russ Burke, Gina Cronin, Alison Manugian, John Connetti, Michael Rasmussen, Rob Foley, and there is one vacancy. Finance Committee with a term to expire 2021, Gary Green, Bud Robinson, there is one vacancy. Housing Partnership with a term to expire 2019, Michelle Colette, Peter Cunningham, Carol Perkins. Invasive Species Committee with a term to expire 2019, Brian Bentencourt, Anna Burnett, Holly Estes, Richard Hewitt, Owen Lathrop, Greta Mark Strobel, Local Cultural Council 2024, Gretchen Hummond, MBTA Advisory Board 2019, Barry Pease.
I refuse.
Montechuson Joint Transportation Authority, the Planning Board rep, which will change on your liaison list, is Russ Burke. Montechuson Regional Planning Committee, Mark Haddad, Michelle Valley Regional Technical School Committee alternate member, Patricia Madigan. Sajison Beach Committee with a term to expire 2019, Linda Moore. Peter Morrison is the Conscom rep. I'd ask the board to make those appointments.
Mark, a colleague of mine in town informed me that he had submitted a request for Economic Development Committee. I don't see his name on here. Did you?
Did we receive anything?
Yeah, they've got two people that are interested right now, they're meeting with them at the end of the month.
Okay.
That's why there's one vacancy.
That's why I just wanted to make sure that that was still in process and understand, you know, so I could explain when you asked me why his name's not on this list.
I think Mike Rasmussen has gotten ahold of both people that are interested.
Perfect, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, please, somebody?
Second.
Thank you, John Beggar. All those in favor, signal a saying aye.
Aye.
I hear they unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board to appoint to the Sustainability Commission Carl Cannon, Bruce Easton, Carl Flowers, Allison Peterson, there is one vacancy. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, full term, full position, Mark Mulligan with a term to expire 2021. Three alternates, Dan McLaughlin, Jennifer Spencer, Deborah Windsor with terms to expire 2019, and there is one vacancy for alternate. I'd ask the board to make those appointments.
So.
So moved.
I heard it, I heard it, seconded.
Either way, yeah, we're good.
I did. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've appointed Connor Campbell to the Groton Country Club staff. I'd ask the board to ratify that appointment tonight.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those, yes.
What position?
Pro shop.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal a saying aye.
Aye.
I hear they unanimous.
So, we'll do an advertising for those vacancies. Connie, I'll have Dawn, if it's all right with you, send her a list tomorrow of the vacancies, if you don't mind, Wendy. Because of, because of your block ad, we had 10 people apply for the committee tonight's own.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yes, thank you for that outreach, we really appreciate it. So, now we're on to items on ongoing issues.
Yep, if I can go through it.
Can we take off A?
Yep.
Please.
A is off and E is off.
Yes.
I don't think we should take A off until they finish the process.
Oh.
I wouldn't take A off.
All right, so admonish.
So, I'll go through the list and say A, B, C, D like we usually do.
Two?
Anybody have a question on A?
Can you put it up on the board?
What page are we on? I'm seeing.
Page two of the agenda.
Of the packet.
Yeah, we're reviewing, we're reviewing.
It's on page two of the packet.
And agenda.
Agenda's at the beginning of the packet.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, please.
There it is, I got it, all right.
A, Police Chief Search. B, Prescott School Disposition, I will have an update for the board on that. We have advertised the RFP. I have a meeting tomorrow with a couple of prospective bidders on it to go over some of the questions that they have. I'll continue to keep the board updated.
What was the deadline on that first?
July 26th. July 26th. For some reason, that date's in my head. July 26th, Allison, I believe. If I'm wrong, I'll let you know. Town Council RFP, we talked about tonight. Signage it in D. I'm going to remove E.
Thank you.
F, G, H, I...
Wait, wait, why are we removing G?
I'm not removing it.
We're not. Removing E, and he's reading the letters.
I'm reading the letters. You're supposed to stop me if there's something you have.
I was understanding you to say I'm going to remove...
No.
Removing A to R.
Removing E.
E?
Yes.
Well, why, and, but he said four-corner sewers all done, right?
No, no, that's the memory of understanding. I have a scheduled meeting with the Sewer Commission.
Okay.
That's a repayment.
Great, I'm glad I...
H, I signed the contract with the project bidder, little bidder, and we will be scheduling a kickoff meeting in the next couple of weeks. I, J, I have an update on the charter approval implementation of the new provisions. Mike Bouchard is just on fire with this. He's working, and they're expediting it through Representative Harrington's office, and hopefully this thing will be approved by the end of the summer.
Thanks, Sheila.
And thanks, Mike, to Bouchard. K, L, M, N, we talked about tonight. O, I will tell you that the school committee has asked me to serve on the Florence Roach Building Committee. As town manager.
Feasibility.
Feasibility, yeah.
Yeah, I don't understand building yet.
Yeah, feasibility committee. I'm sorry. I will be representing the town manager, because I am.
All right, and we'll get updates from you.
You will.
On number O here. Perfect, thank you.
Does that replace this other item we have on our agenda?
I have no idea why that other item came off. I know that I was asked.
The one that says other business?
That, that was removed at the beginning of the meeting.
I didn't hear that, okay. But, well, so, I'm confused.
The school committee is picking their representatives on the committee, not asking for input.
Uh-huh.
It's their committee.
And do you understand if, since they have picked you, that means they are not also looking for someone from our board, or do you not know?
I have no idea. I know they picked me.
I see, okay.
I don't know why, but they...
We have no, we have no say in another committee's decision. Ms. Lyman, is somebody to add to one of these items?
Question on...
No, it'll be me, too.
Question on...
They haven't officially, yeah.
I should probably know this. Is this being built as a GRSD project?
Let me stop you, because we have no insights or awareness or control or anything over the Florence Roach study. That's a school committee issue, and please direct all questions to the school committee.
I think that was his question.
You actually answered my question, so thank you.
P?
This will... Go ahead.
Q? R, you took care of tonight?
Care of R.
Yep, and S, you're about to go into executive session to discuss with me there. So, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Any liaison reports? Come on, all you newly appointed liaisons. I expect to report to the board. All right.
Sewers working in...
The sewers working?
Down at...
Wyman Park, Wyman Beach?
Somebody else already said that.
You're good.
It's my primary thing.
All right, you're good.
Mr. Chairman, the, I'd ask the Board of Selectmen to enter executive session under Mass General法 Chapter 38, Section 21A clause due 2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The purpose would be the police chief. So, I'm going to ask you to do that. At the conclusion of that executive session, I'm going to ask you to enter into a second executive session. I'm doing this for the public, to pursuant to Mass General法 Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, which I'll be asking you to declare, Mr. Chairman, and depending on the outcome of that second executive session, we will return to open session to take up item number 6 on the agenda.
Right, but either way, we do need a vote to enter an executive session or to return to public session
Correct.
at the continuation, at the termination of both executive sessions.
Correct.
John?
Hey, I suggest before we vote, you take a few-minute bio break.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Well, why don't we vote, and then before we start to take that break?
However you want. I like that.
Yeah, because we need some time to shut the cameras down anyway, so take advantage of that.
All right.
I move that we enter executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 3, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, purpose police chief, and to continue an executive session.
To enter into a second.
And to enter into a second executive session.
Well...
You take that vote, sir. Exit the first executive session with the intent to enter into a second.
Immediately.
That's my motion.
Immediately.
Ultimately, to return to open session.
Right, but I do declare that the, that the open meeting can have detrimental effect on the bargaining, litigation, position of the public body. So, it's been moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, for executive session.
Fine, aye.
Tiger, aye.
Piece, aye.
D, aye.
All right, we're now in a second session. We're going to take some time to let, to clear the room and let the table...